Board members, we're going to get started, so if everybody could sit at the table, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Now it is time for the Shack Annual Report. And we're always very happy to see you each year and your very thoughtful report. And of course, we can all celebrate the recess outcome, which is great. So, some successes. All right, and if you all would like to introduce yourselves and begin with your report, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Leah Skirsky. I'm Director of Operations and Strategic Planning in DSS, and I serve as the staff liaison to the committee.
I'm David Whiting, I'm the Chair of the Committee.
I'm Hanan Muthais, I'm the student representative on the committee.
I'm Phyllis Payne, and I help David.
Excellent. So, thank you guys for having us all. I'm not really a sort of PowerPoint presentation guy, I just like to talk to people. So if it's okay with you, that's what we'll do tonight. The first order of business is I see carbohydrates on plates, and I'm not seeing like raw Swiss chard. So we're gonna have to do something about the breakout room? Yeah, that'll be, we'll get on that first thing in the fall. Shack is wrapping up, yes? What? Excellent.
No soda cans around the table, you'll notice.
Alright, alright, fair enough.
Sandy hasn't broken into you.
We're wrapping up a very productive year. We've covered a lot of issues, and we've worked to find a line of best fit between alternative viewpoints on a number of these issues. Before I get into sort of specific focus areas for the year, I want to return to a question that Ryan raised either last year or the year before, possibly both. And you asked us if the FCPS Wellness Policy was among the leading wellness policies in the nation. It's a good question. And the answer, in a lot of ways, is yes, absolutely. There are very few policies that are as broad, that cover as much stuff, that reach as many people as the policy that you guys have enacted. So that is wonderful. It, however, is not perfect. And part of the problem, as I see it, is that there are so many qualifying statements in the policy and the regulation. There are a lot of "we shall make best efforts to", there are a lot of "shoulds" instead of "shall's", there are a lot of, there's a lot of wiggle room in a lot of these words. And so while the policy itself is very broad, there are places where it is not deep. And that's going to become apparent in some of the focus points tonight. And that'll be, it'll be an ongoing issue as we work to improve this policy over the coming years. So please keep that in mind. The first issue I would like to discuss is recess. And I had a whole spiel that I was gonna prepare for you guys, but somebody stole my thunder and sent out an email, and I think you were involved in that process. It's the new guy, he always messes it up.
All I would say is you were involved in the process, and the end was just taking all the work you had done, work with the board. And why, we're not gonna wait around when we've done the work and you've brought forth, it's time to take the policy and translate it into action. And so that we've done that, and we've put out the guidelines for next year, and I think it's gonna be a great step forward.
I think so, I think they're great steps, so thank you for that. Also, thanks to our community members. We have, we have a number of people to whom this recess issue is very important. There's a Facebook group with 1,300-something people. It's a big issue, it's discussed in all the elementary schools, in my experience. The policy Shack, before you stole our thunder, had two pieces, two proposals to give to you guys in order to translate them into policy and regulation. You guys suggested two distinct recesses, ideally reaching 30 minutes. That's good. Shack has come to the conclusion that two 20-minute recesses are preferable, but the number is the number, and I don't think that's gonna change at this minute. So it's something to keep in mind, we can evaluate whether that's getting the job done for next year. However, going back to that sort of central theme, there are some qualifying statements in this, in the policy. So the regulation is very specific, it requires the 30 minutes of recess, and that's great. The policy is a little bit less clear. And so what I'm noticing in the policy is recess should provide for students' selected, structured, and unstructured play. Should, not shall, that's probably okay. Here's the big one. Recession should not be withheld to manage behavioral issues or to allow for the completion of schoolwork. And when you talk to parents, and I was a PTA president for years, and so I've talked to a lot of parents, and we have a lot of community input. Sometimes recess is canceled because it's cold outside, it's snowing, and makes sense. It doesn't just have to be outside, it can be held inside, that can be unstructured play, it can be, there can be movement activities and that, that can fit the bill. Because what you need is not only the physical component, but also the unstructured components so kids can sort out their social development and learning. That's all very important. But aside from the weather, which studies have shown account for about half of the recess, shortens and cancellations, it is being withheld for discipline. It's being withheld in order to complete classwork, to study for tests. It can be withheld if you don't call it discipline, if the kids are too chatty in line on the way to music, or art, or even recess itself. The teachers are gonna sit them down and hold them accountable by removing minutes of the recess. So "should" is great, it really should be a "shall", I think that that's important. Whether that's practicable in terms of what the county can offer the kids, I don't know. But I think there's a middle ground, and I've proposed it a couple times, and it's met with mixed opinions. I feel that there should be a parental notification requirement. If recess is withheld, just as my kid was sick this morning, and he didn't show up to school on time, he was ill, and I forgot to send in the notice to the teacher saying he's gonna be in late. There's an automated thing that came out to me that said, hey dad, you forgot to tell the school he's gonna be late. Why can't that exist for recess being withheld? If it is true, as many people will say that recess is not being withheld frequently, that wouldn't seem to be an onerous requirement. If it is, if however recess is being withheld more often than people realize, and I think the community groups which have garnered this much support from Facebook groups, and what the PTA membership is telling me, and the other parents with whom I talk at sporting events and all the other stuff that we do, this needs more daylight. I don't know, it is clearly now appearing in the policy and the regulation, this is gonna go out to principals, this is gonna go out to faculty, and that's all wonderful. I don't know how closely those guys are gonna pay attention to all of these things. Everyone will try, but is that message getting out thoroughly? And what recourse do parents have? So here's an identifiable policy and regulation. Parents may know about it, they may not, but it's something we can all point to and say, we've addressed this issue. But when, for instance, my kid doesn't always report everything that happens to me during the school day, I don't always know that recess is being withheld until much later. There's not a lot I can do as a parent to intervene and request that this not occur. So I think it's a reasonable middle ground to request parental notification be given when these things are occurring. This says principal or designee. The designee could easily be the teacher that withholds the recess in the first place. I get that, it's an issue of practicability. The principals don't have unlimited time, they're very busy people. But I think, I think this could use a little bit more transparency. And I know you guys have just passed it, and that's cool, this is a great step, so we can see how it goes next year. But I'm curious to know what the Facebook population is gonna tell us about how effectively this is being implemented. I'd like to, I'd like to keep an eye on that and maybe revisit that over the course of the coming school year.
And just, I'm sort of the historical voice on the committee at this point. And so I actually looked back over our recommendations for recess over the years. And one of the things that got taken out that had been in our original recommendation for the regs was some more specificity about the weather, so that, you know, I mean, one of the FCC PTA did a survey, and one of the comments was, "A drop of rain equals no recess, a snowflake equals no recess, too much wind equals no recess." So, when we originally proposed it, and I saw language in some other districts, you know, there were very specific things, like if it's a red air quality day, and it might trigger some kids' asthma, you know, then they had a policy in place for how to handle it. So I guess when you're doing the training and the best practices, I would urge you to include some information, some guidance for teachers as to what is too cold? Because, you know, I'm one of those, when my kids were in preschool, we went outside, it didn't matter if it was raining or snowing, we had, you know, we had appropriate clothing. I know kids in our school system don't necessarily always have appropriate clothing, but wherever we can provide more guidance about getting them outside to play, it'd be great.
So, there's one other recess issue that was raised at our committee meetings this year, and that is, there are three middle schools in the system which contain sixth graders on a daily basis for reasons that are above my pay grade. So it's Poe, Glasgow, and Holmes Middle Schools. They've got sixth graders there, those students need recesses as well. I realize there are facilities issues, middle schools don't have playgrounds, that makes sense. At Carson, which is our middle school, there is a Panther Time Period built into the day, which is, I guess, a study hall or a flexible time. There ought to be some way that sixth graders have access to recess during that time or during another time that's workable for the school. It's important, for all the reasons recess is important in the first place, and I'm sure no one would heartily dispute that. Sandy? Okay. Okay. So, we propose, I'm sure you guys have all carefully read the presentation that we submitted earlier. On Appendix A, which is at the end, we propose language, and again, this is before you guys pass the most recent stuff, so you'll have to figure out how this works. It said daily recess is required for elementary schools. We suggested changing it to for grades K through 6, so that that encompasses, it now becomes a requirement that sixth graders have access to recess. So it's a small wording change, but I think it meets the needs of the community members who brought that to our attention. So I offer that for your consideration. The next issue, you guys wanna just do questions at the end, or shall we? Cool. Alright, excellent. So, cleaning chemicals, and we talked about this last year, because whether a kindergartner or a first grader is gonna be terribly effective at sanitizing a lunch table is a disputed point. Given, well, I mean, I have experience with my kids. You think it's undisputed? With my kids, it would be. They're not gonna do a great job. So relying on young children to actually perform the sanitizing on lunch tables, to me, isn't the smartest move. Especially when considering the chemicals that are used. I just looked them up, the sanitizing agent that we generally use in schools here is called Virex 2/256. And it's got a fact sheet with the EPA. It says, you know, in big letters, there's a lot of, you know, chemicals, scary words at the top, which I don't want to make myself look silly by trying to pronounce. Be very careful, don't let children touch these things, don't let kids near these things. If it comes in contact with your eyes, that's bad. If it comes, it's like everything underneath the sink in your house. You don't want the kids to use that stuff, but at school, they take a rag, they get it in the stuff, they wipe it on the table, that's not good. That's not so much happening this year as it has in the past. And I'll get to that in just a minute. Interestingly, towards the end of the fact sheet, the EPA's fact sheet, it says "not for use on food contact surfaces or food preparation areas." That got my attention. It is a Class 3 toxin, Betty is the expert here. It's called a quaternary compound. There are better ways to handle, to go about cleaning chemicals in school. One option would be to just use water. Like have the custodians use the chemicals at the end, because custodians are gonna do a good job of washing their hands, whereas first graders don't. The other option is to consider greener alternatives to these chemicals, and we raised this issue last year. I believe that the purchasing contract for the cleaning chemicals was due this year. I think it's too late for this current cycle. But that would make right now a really good time to examine alternatives that are less hazardous.
And we had recommended last year that they consider the green chemicals for this contract cycle.
Right, right. Not ignored, probably, I don't know. Your word. So, there are alternatives which are certainly safer, and it turns out that many of these alternatives are comparable in cost. And so, in my mind, there's absolutely no reason to not look really hard at substituting healthier stuff for the stuff that's not so healthy. Especially since kids are handling, also custodians are handling, we don't want anyone to...
Well, and there's data that it decreases the number of absences for both staff and students in the schools when green chemicals are used. So, there's educationally sound reasons to do it too.
So it's like the pre-K for everyone is an expenditure now, but it's really an investment, because you wind up getting your money back in different ways. So it makes sense from a lot of reasons. I think it would be a really good idea if you guys recommended to the Office of Health and Safety that they consider greener chemicals. We, as a committee, could look into it next year. I don't know that we have the resources to do as good of a job as they would with the access to the same information. So this is an important thing, and I think it really should be done. We have worked with Richard, Michael Back, Michael Back, Michael Back, on the committee the last couple of years, and Richard is wonderful. And what he has done, as a result of the feedback from the committee, is come up with a fact sheet. It's an internal fact sheet, and I made copies, but not enough, so I don't really want to distribute it. And it says that in an effort to reduce kids' exposure to chemicals, kids will no longer handle sanitizing chemicals. Mentioned in previous versions of the fact sheet. This is great, except parents don't know that this exists. And just like with the recess issue, my sixth grader doesn't report to me the days when he's a, or my six-year-old doesn't report to me when he's a table washer, and he certainly doesn't report to me what chemicals he's using, and I would bet you good money that he didn't wash his hands. Having been the PTA guy, having been at the school for countless lunches, I watch kids clean tables or table washers and sweepers, none of them wash their hands. They go from there straight to recess. And this fact sheet says, not only don't use it on food contact surfaces, not only don't let kids touch this stuff, but if you touch it, you'd really better wash your hands for 10 or 15 minutes straight. That's not happening. And it's not the scariest chemical in the world, I'm not trying to sound paranoid about this, but there's just no reason to have this even be an issue in the first place, in my mind. So, we also, on the appendix, which has our resolutions, propose, because this is cool, and this is great, and this will be distributed, this fact sheet, to all the principals at the start of the year, in a packet with other fact sheets and other things that they have to keep straight. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of work for those guys. There's a lot of stuff to distribute to their staff and faculty. I don't know if this really gets considered as closely as it deserves. So what I would like as a parent, and I think what the community would like, is sunlight, disinfectant, untotally intended, on this issue to begin with by having a policy statement where it is, there's a public statement that's visible to parents, whereas internal statements are not. Then parents have, they have the opportunity to at least educate themselves on the issue. So I think we would propose that that policy statement be considered by the board. Is she here? Oh, is she? Did you want to add anything to that?
The main issue of the quaternary compounds is that it's an asthma trigger. And it doesn't matter how, like how, whether you have asthma or not, it can, you know, just the exposure to it can cause that. And so that's a big issue to both the children, as well as our custodians who work with the chemicals. And Richard did a great job trying to figure out how to get around this issue. And the first part of it, of having the custodians clean the tables once a day, because of how long it takes for the bacteria to, well, actually, to develop, there's a, the lunch period is shorter than the amount of time. So actually cleaning it once a day is, meets the requirement. So you still have the issue of getting it cleaned before the kids start, and then, but not having the kids exposed to it.
Right. So let's let the custodians who are going to do a better job of washing their hands and keeping themselves safe, do the actual sanitizing. By all means, let's let kids wipe tables, because it builds character, and it teaches them to be useful, and all those positive things. Let's just stick with water. You're not happy about that. But if there's a way to do it so that it's not the really gross bucket, you know, I think there is, there are benefits to be had in having kids help. But I want us to have them help in the most intelligent ways. You have a good question later.
And one of the things that the principal on our committee talked about was, we still want to teach them about cleaning up after themselves. We still want to have, if there's peanut butter, or jelly, or something sticky on the table, have them be able to clean that off. So she was suggesting using water on paper towels, and at least wiping it. Again, it's not killing the germs, but according to the Health Department regulations, the germ killing has to happen at certain intervals, and that would still be happening.
Also, I just wanted to make the point that in order for a quaternary compound to work, it has to be in a liquid form for, it has what's called dwell time. And so, in order to actually disinfect the table, it has to be in a liquid form for something like a minute, two minutes, something like that. And so, having observed how kids wash the tables, as David said, you know, little children, actually little, up to big children, and probably the older they get, the less good they might be also. But they're not getting the whole table clean, they're not leaving it in a liquid form, so you're exposing them to a chemical unnecessarily. They're really not doing the job that the chemical is supposed to do. So that, so anyway, we applaud Richard for finding this great solution.
Yeah, definitely. The third big issue that I want to address is a cap on AP and IB classes. And this is a controversial issue. There is certainly disagreement in the community and on the committee. It's all, it's, it's an issue that's not altogether unfamiliar with parents, and I'm sure you guys have considered it. I know that there are community groups who have raised this issue. There's one in McLean, to which it's very important. There's a lot of pressure to take these courses. And I've written up a spiel in my submission to you guys, but I don't want to just read it to you. I know it's late. There's a lot of pressure to take these courses. You get to weight your GPA, it gives you a bonus on that. It makes you feel like you're more competitive when it comes to college admissions officers evaluating you. There's a financial component. If I take AP Calculus now, I don't have to pay to take it in college where it's actual money. There's also the issue of academic engagement and interest among kids. The problem is, three of those four reasons are fallacious. College admissions officers see through GPA weighting. We're Fairfax County, we're a big entity. GPA weighting is accounted for in the admissions process. Strength of schedule, as it turns out, and this is as per our communications with FCPS staff and our independent research, strength of schedule is not the issue that it appears to be. Turns out, it doesn't matter so much the absolute number of AP or IB classes a student takes makes the difference, yea or nay, into getting into Princeton. It turns out that what matters is the number of classes you take of those types relative to the number that are offered in the community. So if you have a community which offers the ability to take 16 AP courses over your high school career, you better take pretty close to 16 AP courses. You don't have to hit all 16, but you better do your best. If you're allowed to take fewer, then fewer does the same good for you in terms of college admissions. There's also an issue of the time savings and the cost savings once you're in college. Not all colleges accept all AP courses. Some will be accepted, some won't, it depends entirely on the college. So the reasons for which parents and the community as a whole pressures kids to take AP and IB courses, don't hold up under scrutiny. And this is, this is not difficult information to find. This was presented to us by FCPS staff in our meetings, this is all over, all over the literature. The issue of academic interest and engagement is a real, it's a real reason to take these classes, it's a great reason to offer these classes. But balance is necessary. Because AP classes and IB classes carry with them a significantly increased homework load. It's a significantly increased stress load, and it is adding, in my opinion, once it mounts to a certain number of classes, unworkable pressure on kids. It's unhealthy. We have regulations that address this already. FCPS Regulation 3205, the homework one, says that generally, in high school, homework shouldn't exceed two hours per night. That's not happening. It's not, it's not really even close to happening. And your own youth survey data will indicate that. Around 40% of respondents, it's depending on which survey you're reading, there's the FCC PTA one and the youth survey, it was saying that it's 37% to 38%, even 40% of kids are reporting three or more hours. Nobody knows how many more really is. The FCC PTA broke it down a little bit more, four, five, six, it gets to be quite onerous. I have spoken to a number of principals who have indicated that AP classes, once you take three or four of them, you can be looking at six hours of homework a night. That's not workable for a kid who is in school for seven hours. You've got sports practice, you've got community activities, you've got a crushing homework load, you're supposed to sleep, you're supposed to engage with your family, all these things that you're supposed to do, except there's just no time to do it. So it's not an unfamiliar issue, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the point. Absolutely. This is our wonderful student representative on the committee.
Hi, again, my name is Hanan. I'm an 11th grader at Madison High School. I used to attend Langley High School. So I have, I'm kind of well-versed in the sentiment surrounding AP courses, not so much IB. But, so my whole issue, or kind of perspective on taking APs is the fact that we're learning to a test on a specific date, and our teacher must cram all this information into our minds by this date. And I think with that pressure, you lose the love for learning. Instead of thriving in an environment where there's discussions and debate, I'm sitting down learning like 1,000 flashcards for my AP psych exam, which is sad. And I, I think it's important that we realize how impactful, not only in terms of homework, but in terms of mental health, how taking such courses impacts those things. I can say that while we may have a choice when it comes to how many we take, or which ones we take, we discussed in the committee how there's a number of factors, including peer pressure, thinking, oh, she's taking four APs, she's gonna get into a better school than me, I better take four APs too. In terms of parents, my mom is pressuring me to take this course. I don't want to take it, but I'm going to take it. There were issues brought up about how counselors, they can recommend everything that they want to recommend. They could tell you 1,000 times over again that you shouldn't be taking AP Calculus, but at the end of the day, you just have to get that form signed, and you're good to go. So there's a number of issues that come under this. But in conclusion, I full, wholeheartedly believe that a cap would get rid of that, or not get rid of, would lessen the stress and the pressure when it comes to taking those courses and those exams.
Point. And here's, here's the thing about this, there isn't...
Can you speak into the, because we need to record you.
There isn't perfect data that's gonna support, hey David, you're totally right, this data shows that this is what needs to happen. I can point you to the youth survey data, which will show you the correlation between homework load and feelings of sadness or depression, feelings, thoughts of suicide, all that horrible adverse mental health implications that we all worry about, that parents are very worried about. As a parent of a middle school kid, I look at the high school workload, I talk to other parents, this is a scary, scary thing. He's a bright kid, he's gonna want to take some AP classes. Maybe even a lot of AP classes, I don't know. But I don't want him overloaded to the point of adversely impacting his mental health. Some pressure's healthy, some stress is healthy. But, I mean, how many people in this room think that overall, both for adults and children, stress is decreasing as time moves on? It's only going in the wrong direction. And so I can show you correlations if you want, I can tell you how many kids this would affect. We're proposing a cap of 2233, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, which is still a high cap. It's a middle ground, it's a reasoned approach. If it were up to me, I'd probably make it seven. But at the same time, I want to account for kids who want to push themselves more. If there's academic engagement, let's let them, let's let them achieve what they can achieve. But let's not let that attempt for achievement, the determination to achieve and strive, let's not let it fall back on them and crush them. We're the grownups, they're the kids. It is often said, hey David, this is, this is not cool. You can't just do a blanket regulation and change this immediately. It's big government, that's not good. What we need is a societal change. Instead, let's explain to people that it may not be necessary that you load yourself to death, that's a bad choice of words, you load yourself up with AP courses in an effort to get into Harvard. Because maybe there are other things that admissions officers care about more. The problem is a societal change, especially in an area where we have such diverse demographics in the first place. It's, it takes a long time to get that message out. And I can say this till I'm blue in the face, and when I'm talking with other parents, I'm not sure that it, I'm gonna persuade the entire county, you guys don't have to do this to your kids. We're FCPS, we're the 10th largest in... We're FCPS, we're the 10th largest in terms of population in the country. Everyone looks to FCPS as an example. Our wellness policy is one of the strongest in the country. Nothing's perfect, but it's great. Why don't we be the first ones to take a look at this issue? Why don't we be, others have considered it, but why don't we, with the weight of FCPS, address this issue? Why don't we set the tone for the country, for the county, for all of these kids who don't have the ability to effectively advocate for themselves against parents, against community, against what people understand to be the requirements to get into college? Let's help these kids, because this isn't healthy. And so as the chair of the FCPS health, the, the school health advisory committee, I'm not doing my job if I don't bring this idea to you guys for serious consideration. I did not like it when I first heard it. I thought it was, I thought it was too, too rigid, too strict. I thought it didn't account for the high flyers. I don't want to, I don't want the adverse consequences of this. As I thought about it more, as I've thought about the adverse mental health consequences, which are serious, these are big deals, it becomes clear to me that this issue deserves real consideration. And so Shack has proposed the caps that I discussed, it's in the appendix, number four, 2233. It'll, it's sort of a middle ground between the competing viewpoints. It's that line of best fit that I talked about. And I would welcome questions. Is Phyllis, do you have a point?
Well, I was just going to say, we did ask staff to give us some data on the number of students taking one AP, two APs, and so on. And so with this suggestion, it would be possible to take 10. So if you write in it for the class of 2017, there were a total of 285 students out of 13,180 who took 11, 12, 13, 14, or 15.
So it's not, it's not a cap that's going to immediately change the world for a large number, a majority of students, but what it does is it sets a tone and it says that we, the school board, we, the parents, we, the administration, realize that this is a big deal and we're taking a step. And if 10 is too much, then we'll lower it. If it's not, we'll raise it, but we're addressing it.
Even getting a conversation going would, I think, possibly help the culture, you know, with the culture change.
That's how you get the societal change.
And this data that we have, I realize, is not perfect, because it was AP only and not IB. So if and when you have the discussion, I'm sure you can get more thorough data that's comparing the two and doing a full examination.
So the, the final two points before we open to questions, I guess, the metrics, that was a big part of our charge for this year. We created the wellness policy a couple of years ago. We created metrics last year by which we could measure adherence to the policy and figure out where it's strong, where it needs additional work. We don't have the data yet. It's, it's not accessible to us, it's still being compiled, so should be in over the summer, and so that's, that's job number one for next year. So we're aware of that, it was out of our control, there's nothing we could do about that. The charge for the school year, next year, it's also in the presentation that you should have in front of you. We want to evaluate the, the wellness metrics. We want to examine current and proposed practices for student technology use and any associated health effects. We want to examine middle school start times. I know that's been considered, but it's important to committee members. We want to examine more fully homework as it corresponds with stress and mental health. And let me say, on the topic of homework, that's another way to directly impact student stress, and that's a cool idea. The problem is, there's such a variance in how long it takes kid one and kid two, two, to accomplish homework for a class. There's variance among teachers. It's a very difficult thing to say, there's a hard cap now of two hours of homework a night, because what happens when you have two tests in the same day, or you have a paper and a test, it's impossible. I don't know that that's workable, I'd love that, I don't think that's going to fly, just in terms of practicability. AP and IB cap gets at that issue indirectly and it sets the tone, not just for the kids that want to take 13, but for all the kids, because you're no longer compared with kids who can take 13 AP classes. It's a more reasonable number. It addresses these issues in a way that's manageable. And I struggled for a long time with the issue of a per-year cap or a flat cap. You take 10 over the course of high school, use them however you want them. I came to the conclusion, the committee came to the conclusion, this isn't just the me show, that a per-year cap is better because it discourages gaming of the system. If you have a, a total cap, you could load up one year, you could go to private school for a year and take five more, you could do a lot of stuff. This is, it's a simpler, more straightforward solution. So that's, that's where we landed. The final charge, well, two other charge things. One is, because of the news that everyone's aware of, we want to evaluate how the threat of violence, particularly gun violence, impacts students' health and ability to learn. And the final issue would be greening our cleaning chemicals, as we discussed earlier. Greening our cleaning chemicals, finding safer, comparably effective and comparably cost-effective alternatives to what we're using.
First of all, thank you very much for also giving us what you would like for your charge for next year. We appreciate that. Just before, because we have a lot of people who obviously want to comment, the very meaty report, thank you very much for the thoughtfulness of this. Ordinarily, I imagine, and for Dr. Braybrand, items one, two, and three, obviously, we will get a response back from staff, because a lot of that has to do with more staff going forward, and I think you've already acknowledged that, the issue of workload, and that's a very interesting one, because it's one that, that we've wrestled with before. And, you know, we need to figure out where we are with that, how we would deal with that, and et cetera. So in terms of one, two, and three, we will get a response back. I think four takes a robust discussion, so thank you for, for, for bringing that up. So I have pretty much everybody, I think, is on the list. So at any rate, all right, I, the first is Ms. Heinz.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Shack always does good work, especially happy to see our Madison student here. I am your school board member, by the way, so thank you for all your work on that. I think yours is the most important voice in the room right now, so thank you so much for being here. Just a couple of things. I will say, I teach elementary school in Arlington, and the whole thing about thou shalt not mess with recess can work. I don't know how they do it there, but I just know that recess is sacred and it's 20 minutes. And if it's raining outside, it's indoor recess for 20 minutes. And so I don't know how they do it, maybe we should check that out, I think, unless there's a safety issue, obviously, or something like that. But we, that's the message that all the teachers have gotten, at least in my building, and there's no doubt about it. So I don't usually like the, you know, boom fiat kind of response to things, but if you know that it's sacred, then you work another way to deal with, you know, what might get in the way, you just figure it out. So anyway, I'm, I'm with you on the shall on that. The AP and IB salvo, I really like. I think, you know, this is our job. We've talked about it before, we're the policymakers, and if we don't set a policy on this, we are setting a policy on it, right? By not acting, we're acting, we're, we're making a statement. And it is simply not true that limiting homework, as you say, is the answer, because you can't just say, all right, we can't have a fiat for that, right? Because teachers and students and parents will come back to us and say, but I'm taking four APs. My, my students are taking an AP, I have to get them ready for a test. I owe them, you know, a shot of a good score on that test, which means that I owe them a certain amount of homework. And, and they know it because they decided to take the test. It's really an impossible conversation to tell those teachers and those kids and those parents that you just can't do so much homework. It is not possible. Okay? And so I, I think the only, I, I think we absolutely have to have, and I, Phyllis, I think you mentioned it, community conversation. I really do think so. And I think we need to have university admissions people in the room. We tried this a few years ago and it just kind of fell flat, but we need to have admissions people in the room, definitely from our major Virginia universities and, you know, some other major schools that our kids tend to go to, large universities, just have them in the room and ask them, what are you looking for? And we're Fairfax County, and if we do something that's kind of bold, tell us what difference that will make, you know? Because I just think confusion reigns on this. You will hear different assumptions and different stories and different background knowledge from different people, and it's just very confusing. Nobody has the full story, nobody. So, and I, and I think we owe it to the community and to the kids to start that conversation, honestly. And then finally, thank you for putting the effect of fear of violence on your charge for next year. We need to hear from the kids on that. You know, we absolutely need to hear from the kids on that. The adults are having a grand old time arguing this issue, right? And I think there are a lot of students out there who, who are, now have a voice, and it's wonderful that they do. But I'd love for us to make an effort to hear from our students as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the terrific presentation, very informative, and I think your suggestions are right on point, and, and I hope that we can take some action on some of these. As the father of a graduating senior from Oakton and having two graduates proceeding, going back seven years or maybe more, I can totally hear and will reflect to you that the issue of, of academic pressure and self-imposed requirements by the students is very real. There's very much sort of an arms race amongst students to take what they, what they understand to be enough AP classes, and it creates a tremendous amount of stress. So in this most recent, since I have a senior, I've just, just gone through the application process. I have a very competitive student, and, you know, what I heard was, I think what you're, what you said about strength of schedule, it's not so much, but is the student maximizing the rigor, which is, is a wonderful way to assess whether a student is academically interested. However, at some of our schools, what maximizing rigor entails is a Herculean effort every year during high school, to the expense of the joy of learning, assuming a lot of imbalance in their schedules, and frankly, inappropriately skewed towards trying to take that next AP class, so that they, they feel that they've accomplished it. So I, I would be supportive. I'm not so sure that the 10 number is right, but I do think that if we can come up with the, with the, the policy change that allows us to communicate to our, to the universities that, you know, the maximizing rigor at, at our school only permits them to take a certain number of, of AP classes that could alleviate some pressure. And as a matter of fact, my, my own senior, in his capstone project, talked about pressure and anxiety, and that was one of his suggestions in his presentation. So, and I think it was received pretty well by the, by the teachers that he presented to.
I'm curious, how many did he, did he have a suggestion for how many?
I'll say it's lower than 10. And, and, and I will, I will echo what you said about the increasing pressure. When my oldest went off to college and she went to a very, very well-respected, highly competitive university, the number of, of AP courses she took, I think, was six or seven. And that was seven years ago. And I think my current graduate from Oakton is eight or nine. And so there has been sort of this incremental growth in terms of what the kids think is appropriate, because if, if they are doing that, they are hearing somehow, internalizing this notion that they have to do as, as much as possible. And, and, and I, so I really think that that's a, a discussion that we should have on this board. One thing that I, that we talked about, that you talked about a little bit, of course, is anxiety that's related to that. And I wonder whether or not that's something that maybe in the future, you could look at, what are the other sources of anxiety, particularly for our, our students in high school? You know, what, what, what can we do to alleviate anxiety in, in our, in our classrooms in the high schools? Because I think that is the, that's a real difficult issue to tackle, and, and I don't, and I think that part of it is the academic part, but I think there may be other components that, that I would like in the future to look at.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you. And first of all, I want to thank you all for your excellent work this year. You've done masterful, a masterful job. And so thank you for, for everybody on Shack, and I've, I've enjoyed joining you for, for most of your meetings, I believe. The wellness policy, it, it is stellar, and as I indicated to you, we're taking that to the V SBA Food for Thought. We're offering that as an example of something that we think should be recognized by V SBA, and, you know, I, I have high hopes for it, and, you know, and of course, we have to add sleep health in there. That was something that we did add in as one of our, our pies on there, and that's very important, too. So as far as the metrics, Dr. Braybrand, where, where do the metrics stand? The Shack was supposed to take a look at the metrics this year and just never receive them, perhaps you could answer that question?
Yes, we started that process this year in March.
Okay.
Allowing administrators time. We did some collaboration work with the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement. So we formulated a survey. So we used all the wellness metrics, did a survey with our principals. The principals worked collaboratively with their wellness members at their schools, and then they completed that over the course of the last several weeks. And we actually just finished that reporting, I believe the last school maybe finished last week. So we actually are going to meet the baseline reporting of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act with school year 17, 18. And then over the summer, we're working on trying to compile and get the metrics in a way that's readable for each school. Right now, it's just one huge data dump of every school. So now that we have all the schools' information complete, we'll be working on that and having that ready in the fall.
So that'll be ready for, to go to Shack in the fall and they can, they can do the, okay, that's great, that's wonderful to know. As far as recess, I think, you know, we've, we've made great strides on recess, and I, I appreciate all the recommendations that you've made. As far as enforcement, Dr. Braybrand, with the discipline piece, I, I think that's probably something where we do, Shack deserves an answer for that, it doesn't have to be tonight if you don't have it in, in hand, but I think that's, we, we should answer that question as to how do we enforce that new rule that we have about, well, it isn't really a new rule, but we strengthened that rule about recess not being taken away for discipline reasons or for, for, for homework assignments. Do you think that the parents, I mean, parents can go to the principal, parents can go to the regional assistant superintendents. Do you think parents know to do that? Do they think to do that, or do they go on, you know, kind of on Facebook and say, you know, this, this stinks?
I think that the parents in this room are the engaged parents who work to change policies, in fact, policies, and obviously, you guys are on top of policy better than anyone. I don't think most parents know that there are these policies in the first place. I certainly don't think that parents realize that there's recourse when policies are not being implemented perfectly. And that's sort of, that's, that's why I feel the answer to this enforcement question might just be a notification issue, because if we're trying to effect a societal change and educational mission here, the first step is letting parents know what the issues are and that these events are occurring, so that they can then contact you guys, fill up your email accounts, but ultimately, be very happy with the result.
I was just thinking. That you want to comment?
Just a second. Okay. I would just say, you know, we have this 13-person Facebook group, and so if a parent goes onto Google and looks up recess in Fairfax County because they're frustrated, they find us and they post about it. And then we tell them that Dr. Braybrand has been, made it clear that if you, you know, you talk to the teacher first, talk to the principal, and then you can talk to the regional superintendent, you can talk to your school board member. So we encourage parents to do that, if they come to us with that concern, so.
Well, that, that's good. Of course, there should be a more systematic way than them just finding you. So, and I think that's, that's on us, to be sure that people know that. Are there weather guidelines? You mentioned weather guidelines about, you know, if it's so cold, if it's so hot, you don't go out. Do we not, I didn't even think about that.
Well, so it was interesting, when we first wrote our, the regulation, you know, when we presented it to you, and then after it came back from whatever happens to these things in the summer, that language was struck out. The part about, you know, we were sort of encouraging going to outdoor recess, and it was struck out. When we did our research, putting these guidelines together, I think it was before Leah, it was like, because we worked on those for so many years. During one of the years, we had research from other districts, and I actually think it was Arlington County that had the very specific language. I don't know if they still do, because I think a lot of recess language is changing, but I have that if it would be helpful. I have the old notes that I had, I looked at the other night, and-
I think that would be helpful.
There was wording about red day, you know, red air days and-
Right. Because if there, if we could have some sort of a guideline, I think that would, that would be useful and, and helpful. I, I appreciate you listening to my constituent about sixth grade recess. I know she came to you and, and talked with you about it. So as a, Dr. Braybrand, as a next step, I, I'm going to suggest that we go to the three principals and get their input on this and see, you know, what they think about providing recess for their sixth graders. I haven't had that conversation with the three principals, but I think it would be worthwhile to get their thoughts on that. worthwhile to get their thoughts on that. If you haven't already?
I haven't already. We can have that conversation. I would definitely prefer that I'd have the conversation first with the principal.
Sure. That's what I mean to collect the...
I, this is what I would say. I'm here this year, I saw these folks come forward, and we've put out something before the year ends that I think advances a lot of the recess piece.
Absolutely.
We're going to be a work in progress. I'm not saying it's all perfect. It won't all be perfect next year. There'll be issues. I encourage the conversations to start with the teacher, then with the principal region. And we'll work to continue to make things better. So the particular piece about the middle school versus elementary, you know, I've got to, I've got to learn more about that issue and the middle school operation and the schedule before. I'd really want to commit that part. And I don't think our current guidelines actually specifically say anything about those middle schools.
Well, it talks about elementary school.
Right.
And so in these three schools, sixth grade is in, is in middle school. So I would appreciate you having that conversation and getting some input. I know they have, they have their master schedules to deal with, they have all kinds of things to deal with. So I'd like to know what would be the varies. And congratulations, Dr. Braybrand, on moving very, very quickly on the recess. I think you and your team are to be congratulated on moving forward for this fall.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Just an FYI, there are guidelines from the Office of Safety and Security around excessive cold weather and heat-related, and when students should not be outside. That would be, that would be great. Okay. On the, just very briefly, on the, on the cleaning materials. All green materials, are they safe for kids? Is that true? Or do we know?
They're at least safer. It probably depends on which, I mean, there's, there's a universe of cleaning materials out there. And Betty would be the expert. She's done a lot of research on this. That is something we can continue to evaluate if, if we have an open and willing Office of Health and Safety to have this conversation. We can certainly go into great detail. I would love to spend our time next year greening the chemicals, because there's no reason not to do it. It's cost-effective and effective, effective.
So I guess as a next step, I would like for us to take a look at the possibility of using green chemicals. I'm kind of of two minds about only using water. I mean, I know it's safer for the kids, but then it doesn't really sanitize.
Right.
And that's, you know, that's the balance. So it's better than having them have poison on their hands, certainly, but...
So there is, there is one other thing that I found out. Through that lovely recess Facebook group, I posted a question about hand washing. And I said, "Just let me know. Talk to your kids. Are they washing their hands before lunch?" There were a lot of grossed-out people after I asked the question, because so many people came back and said, "Ew, no, we found out they're not washing their hands." So I think that is another piece in terms of training and, you know, if you're worried about disinfecting the table, let's, come on, you got it.
Wash your hands.
Wash your hands before you eat lunch.
So then I'll just touch a little bit on the big recommendation on capping AP and IB. And thank you for tackling that. You know, this is something I think our board has to have a conversation about. It's a, it's a big issue, but we can't avoid it. And thank you for speaking so articulately about your own experience, too. I think that that is very important. We did start the conversation a couple of years ago, and then I just, it didn't go very far. So I'm glad you've given us something to talk about, you know, by giving us a specific proposal. I think IB may be a little bit different animal, because so much of that is dictated by the IB program itself. So we would have different parameters, but we can, we can certainly get that. And I would be interested, I think I may have seen the data, Phyllis, that you talked about, but I think that's something that the board would be interested in seeing, too. Is that something that you can just email to us, or does staff have it?
Well, we got it from Teresa, so...
Okay, so, could, I think, that would be great. Okay, that would, that would be great. So, and you're right about the homework policy. If somebody's taking four or five APs, there's no way they have two hours of homework. There isn't. That was, that policy that you mentioned was our former student rep on the school board, Harris Latif, that was his favorite policy, to go to student groups and tell them about that policy. And they go, "Oh, do our teachers know about this policy?" You know, because we certainly have more than two hours of homework. So anything that we can do to reduce the stress on our kids, reduce the homework load, and get more balance in their life, I think is a good thing. So I welcome that conversation.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just want to say one thing. If you look at the youth survey data, and we've looked at it fairly extensively this year, you guys have answers to a lot of these questions and ideas that are there. And we have some information from students that could be tailored to get better information. But the thing that strikes me is that, in terms of mental health and overall wellness, many of the suggestions for students are things like community engagement, find a trusted adult mentor, find other activities to make yourself well-rounded, to blow off steam. All those things, which are all good suggestions, become impossible by the very fact that you have six hours of homework. There's only so many hours, and sleep is important. Phyllis is the expert there. So there is good advice, but the advice contradicts itself, just because it's impossible.
It is. That's a very good point. The relationship piece is huge, both for academic success, mental health, and just, and success in life as well. So we don't want to undermine that. And thank you for raising middle school start times. We do have to grapple with that. You know, we're, that's, go ahead, Phyllis, I know you're aching.
Okay, so I, I asked my colleagues over there if they had things they wanted me to say. So, the FCC PTA survey, also in terms of middle school, found out that, looking at factors that impact stress, they did ask questions about that. And at the middle school level, parents said, lack of, 47% said the top stress factor was lack of sleep.
Wow.
Yeah, it's huge. And multiple assessments, assignments, assessments due on the same day, 43%. And then the amount of time spent on homework, 36%. There's also a huge number of parents driving their kids to middle school because it starts so early. So I would not...
Got to say it.
Just had to put that in.
Thank you. And again, thank you for an excellent report. Appreciate it.
Okay, I have Ms. McGlocklin, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Kies-Gamara, Mr. Moon, and Ms. Palczuk.
Ms. McGlocklin.
Thank you. Yes, David, I think you know my twin sister who served on Shack, and so you're watching my really good poker face.
The same poker face.
Yeah, it was identical poker face. So first of all, let me just say that I agree with many of the recommendations you all bringing forward. And where I lost my poker face was on the table washing. Dr. Braybrand, I think it's wholly inappropriate that we are having children putting their hands in any bucket of water. Dirty water, dirty soapy water, dirty toxic chemical water. No. I think we can certainly teach children responsibility of, you know, whatever your lunch mess was, you are responsible for cleaning your space and all of that. But I think we need a staff conversation on why we're having children wiping down tables. I, I think based on the fact that kids aren't very good at hygiene, I would draw the line, say, I don't think that part of trying to teach them being responsible, and then also exposing them to all the nasty germs that are on the table. So that's, that's where I was getting the reaction. David was like, I just don't want them cleaning the tables and putting their hands in those buckets. I do think that it's, we see in hospitals and many public spaces now, the Purell dispensers on the walls. Put it in every classroom, and as the kids are going to lunch, get your squirt, rub your hand while you're walking down the hallway. I mean, there's things we can do to help, I think, with kids having better hygiene and minimizing it. I'm wholly in support of your awesome recommendation about green products or anything else. The magic of vinegar, go Google it. You cannot be underestimated. It's magical, it's antimicrobial. So vinegar and water spray, if you need to, you know? And kids could do a spray bottle of that. And, but absolutely get rid of those toxic chemicals. Our custodians don't need it, our kids don't need it. I don't care if we even purchased it, it doesn't mean you keep using it. We just do something else, and vinegar costs next to nothing. Cancel recess, thank you, everybody, your advocates on it. That was an issue when I was PTA president at the elementary school level. And I could not believe some of the things that our principals and administrators said about why it was okay to use recess as the stick to make kids behave. So, and Ms. Heinz, thank you for commenting that in bad weather, so it's indoor recess, the whole point is kids need unstructured time for their brains. And that goes to what the research on the brain tells us. So I very much, Dr. Braybrand, want to advocate strongly on behalf of the community, that they went down to Richmond and changed something for us. We owe it to them to do our best in the execution. And that is a minimum of 30 minutes, and we can say it's recommended 40. And how the principals can make it work with their playground, but that's what the advocates brought forward, that's what the research was saying is optimal. And we're not forcing 40 minutes on the elementary schools. We're saying minimum of 30, and then if they can shoot to 40, because apparently some schools can and do make it work, that's great. But if we don't put the information in front of the principals, they won't even know that. So that's going to be my really strong encouragement. And I hope all of my colleagues, as a next step, you'll consider supporting that as guidance to the superintendent. But I think optimal needs to be put in the wording, not just 30 minutes. Where you also saw my poker face fall is about college admissions. My colleagues know, I was a former Georgetown admissions officer. I also read for a year at Duke University. I'm also alumnus of Penn, where I work closely with the admissions staff there. I also led Fair Grade, where we surveyed over 100 universities, where Fairfax County sends its students every year. The top 100 schools, and this was done, interestingly, exactly 10 years ago. That is a great report for framing out how we might want to go this topic again. Because this is about data, this isn't about our anecdotes. So to Mr. Wilson, I appreciate you sharing your experience with your kids. I've just had three kids in four years graduate out of Fairfax County. Two of the three applied to multiple IVs and got into multiple IVs. They took eight APs over the course of four years. They were able to play multiple sports and be involved in multiple activities. So I don't, I think that there's a perception of an arms race out there. The reality is, you can get into our nation's best schools, including beloved UVA, and you don't have to take more than eight APs to get there. I am 100% about how we address stress, but Dr. Braybrand, this has been something I've been talking about since before I joined the board, and Mr. Moon knows about it. That homework policy specifically states, it does not matter what the rigor of the course is for homework loads. Homework is about depth and rigor of the material, not volume. And there are plenty of public and private, private high schools around this country where kids in their senior year can take three to four APs, and they're not crushed by stress. It's volume of homework and volume of assessments. We were telling our teachers up until two years ago, we wanted two graded assessments per week. No university in this country has 36 graded assessments in one class. And that's what we were telling our AP teachers, and we were telling all of our teachers down to kindergarten. So then we brought it back to saying, one graded assessment per week. Well, that's still nine and a quarter, and that's still 18 in a semester, and you will still not find a college course in this country that grades these kids 18 times in one semester. That's what we're still doing to our kids. So I, again, don't ever want to make it anecdotal about my N of three kids, Mr. Wilson's, anyone around the table, Mr. Moon has some really accomplished, amazing children, too, as do all of the board members here. This is, this is about using data and information. I will say, in terms of selective admissions, where we find the highest stress for kids, you go to the Fair Grade report from a decade ago, it has not changed. They will still tell you when it's true, from what I've seen. It is the rigor of the courses you take, it is the letter grade you earn in those courses. So the weighted GPAs, I wish it weren't the case, it does matter. And in fact, if you actually did an analysis of our 25 high schools, counting TJ, and you looked at how kids were getting into the most selective courses, other than other external additional factors, but the vast majority of those kids, you could take the GPA lineup, and you're going to see who got in, who got waitlisted, who got denied. And there's always going to be the one-offs, but the pattern is there. So having a much more robust conversation than tonight, I really appreciate, David, you're encouraging us to do. I'm 100% on board with it. And I think that we have a framework to looking at how you have an intelligent conversation. To my colleagues, I was, some of us were muttering at this end, you cannot make a separate carve out for IB. So if you're going to want to say, we're going to limit AP, but oh, IB is self-contained and protected, no. Robinson High School is one of our largest IB programs in the county. And every year, Ms. Elizabeth Schultz and I visit with the students, and they will tell us, full IB is crushing. It's fabulous, but it's crushing. So if you think that you're just trying to solve stress for the AP kids, we have to have the dialogue on how to help our IB kids. But, but I will just wrap up with this. If we honored the brain research on homework, and we honored our own regulate, our own policy that says it's rigor, not volume, based on the strength of the class, that would go a long way. And I still think that in the end, there is something to be said, looking at the North Carolina model, that says that they did limit, I think it was no more than five APs in any given year. And they said, from the college admissions standpoint, beyond five in the totality of your high school experience for a North Carolina state university, including Chapel Hill, you've maxed out on the rubric of getting an admissions benefit. So there are things that I know we can do, but, you know, those are the things that I think are, are most important. And my final thing is middle school start times. Dr. Braybrand, I have said how much I adored Karen Garza and her leadership, and she got us to sleep at the high school level. But she also led this community to believe that within two years' time, we would fix the middle school start time. And that has been now well past two years. So we are two years past our commitment to the community. It's got to stop. It doesn't cost that much money in the grand scheme of a $3 billion budget, but we are hurting two to three years' worth of kids' lives with an unhealthy start time. And we can't keep doing this on the backs of our middle school kids. So I applaud Shack doing it. Frankly, I don't want to wait just till you guys touch it, because I would like to see our division finally stop doing it and fix it for a year from now. I know Mr. Plattenberg will laugh at me, but...
So I have a, I have a couple of thoughts to share. One, speaking of poker faces, next time you have poker night at your house, give me a call. Invite your sister, that'd be great. Also, I was up at 5:30 this morning, getting my little guy up for middle school, so I'm with you on that. I think we're in loud agreement there. On IB, really loud, part of the reason I set the, I proposed the cap where I capped it is because that allows people to complete their IB diploma. You don't want to cap it south of what's required in order to actually earn the diploma, because that doesn't make any sense. But a 10 cap easily allows you to do that, whether you do more on top of that, I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but it allows for that. Your issue of college admissions officers, clearly you have expertise in this. We used the best data that was available to us. And in any event, whether it's approached through a homework cap or an AP/IB cap, I don't really care. Your compadre next to you just said a homework cap is not workable. I would love to see a homework cap. So if you want to do that, let's talk, because I think that's an outstanding way to go about it. I didn't think that was on the table. I didn't think, to answer Tom, I didn't think that a cap of fewer than 10 classes would be a startable issue. I thought that people would look at me and say, you can take six? That's crazy. I'm all for it. If you want to have it lower, that's cool with me, too. But this is a conversation, I mean, Shack has made its proposal, that's what we think is a good starting point. But you guys obviously have the umph to actually set the policy where you think it's appropriate.
Well, you know, in terms of your comment about homework and capping it, so I think it would be on an average. I mean, there's going to be certain nights where it might be three, but then the next night, it might only be one, because of how your block schedule works. But for every time a student steps in a classroom for 90 minutes of instruction, it is not unreasonable that you can have homework or the assignment be at about 45 minutes. It took you 90 minutes to learn the material, 45 minutes to review, or 45 minutes to start working on that five-page paper, but it's supposed to be chunked. I mean, our homework regulation tells you ways to do this. So in the end, 45 minutes, you'd be at two hours and 15 minutes a night. And you and I, everybody knows, the kids would love it if they even saw something like that.
Thank you. I have Ms. Schultz, then Ms. Kies-Gamara, Mr. Moon, Ms. Palczuk, and Mr. McElveen. Schultz?
A couple of things. As a mother...
Uh, as a mother of boys, go outside no matter what. And that's, there's almost a no- a nothing that comes out. I'm like, maybe if it's lightning, but it's got to be really close. Just don't stand out of the tree. I mean, I, seriously, I, I, there is, we, look, I grew up half my life in Southern California. It was Santa Ana winds and 110, and well, it's a dry heat. Go outside. I, I, just freaking go outside. So I'm on the go outside no matter what. Um, boys also don't wash their hands ever. Like, so no, no, no hands in water, no hands in whatever. Absolutely yes, Ms. McLaughlin's right, vinegar and water. It is, you know, the ancient remedy to everything. It hurts nothing, it cleans everything, you know, uh, you know, boom, you're done. I mean, that, that, that's, that's easy peasy. I have greened, you know, my own products in my own home. You know, everybody knows you clean with a clean paper towel and not a dirty sponge on a counter. You know, I mean, Myers, I, all of that. And if I'm doing it in my house, I would expect, you know, the same for us to do for our kids. Those are easy. Um, AP and IB, um, Ms. McLaughlin, again, is exactly right. I've calculated, I've now talked to over 1,800 kids, um, in my student town halls. 1,800 kids, over and over and over, year to year, it never changes, the amount of stress that they feel for mythical reasons. Well, that's what I need to get. He's taking three APs, so I have to take four. Because that, I'm like, who says? Well, I have to get into school, and if they're taking three, I gotta take four. Who says that that's what's going to differentiate you? They haven't talked to the college admissions officer, they haven't talked to the col- they haven't been to the college, they have no idea what's going to differentiate them. I'm going to renew my quest yet again. I think this is four years running. We have to have a college and university roundtable with admissions officers and have a discussion in earnest to get to pragmatic, uh, uh, frameworks for students and for families. There are absolute categorical myths being perpetuated, often from student to student. That is actually the most shocking thing, is it isn't the pressure, more often than not, not never, but more often than not, it is student to student, peer to peer, um, discussions that are driving them taking these classes. They are taking classes they have absolutely no interest in, that are bogging them down mentally, psychologically, um, uh, from a pure exhaustion level, because they perceive that these classes are needed to get into college. This is not helpful. This is something that I've been battling, I think, almost the whole six years that I've been on the board. So, um, I, I, I agree, you got to start someplace, maybe it's 10. I don't, I honestly don't care, you know, throw some spaghetti on the wall and see what sticks. Um, but doing nothing isn't the option. Um, the big issue, um, uh, that Ms. McLaughlin and I hear, when she, she comes to, if we share a school, and she can come, uh, we go together, um, is what is rigor? Um, and an AP or an IB teacher who says, well, I have an AP or IB class, so they have to do more, um, the calculation, if, if they only do one assignment per week, I'm telling you, they're not. It's virtually every single period. But let's just go with the minimum. 18 assignments over the course of a semester, one per week, times six periods, is 108 assessments in a single semester for a high school student. If that teacher has 30 students, 18 assignments times 30 students times six periods, or five periods, is 540 assignments that they have to prepare, that they have to grade, that they have to enter into grade books. We are assessing students to death, starting in kindergarten all the way through high school. They walk out of high, high school, and we hear over and over again, the very first thing they say is, college is easier. And, and it's because they're in a building for 35 hours. If you, if you'd say 30 minutes travel to and from school, that's another five hours a week that they're traveling. Then you're going, uh, let's say this, it's between 10 to 15 hours a week in homework, and it's really more 15, especially the kids that we're talking about. And then if they do anything else, if they are, have any sport, any fine art, any performing art, anything, that's another 10 hours. You're at a 65-hour work week, and they haven't had a meal, they haven't spent any time with their family, they haven't slept, nothing, you're at a 65-hour work week, right off the top. They go to college, and they take a 15 to 18-hour credit schedule, they buy back 20 to 25 hours a week, right off the top! And they're not doing all of the, the, uh, uh, assessments. So the, the, we are at a national epidemic on stress. You know, I just sent to, to staff, and I don't know if you've all have had the chance to see it, but they just did 31 children's hospital study for eight years. And suicide ideation and suicide, uh, attempt diagnoses have more than doubled, more than doubled in eight years. That is an inconceivable number to me. Something is gravely, gravely, gravely wrong. And as we see the pressures mount, as we see, and what I don't see here, which I was hoping to see, is something about screen time. Um, screen time and, and, and di- and digital, and digital, um, citizenship. We, there's something wrong. And we're, you know, the 10th largest school system in the United States of America. We're part of the problem if we're not addressing it headlong, racing into it. And, and we, part of these student town halls are kids from other places, families from militaries, from, from business moves, from everything else. And the kids who come here from any place else in the country, including other places in Virginia, that, they hit here, and Dr. Brabran knows what we're talking about, because his kids started down in Lynchburg. And there is a holy guacamole come to Jesus that happens when kids come here, where they were the top students in their, you know, whatever, um, uh, originating school district. And they, they come here, and whether it's the IP and the AB, or the sleep, or the, the whatever else, there's something here that's different in the water. And we have to seriously take this and then marry it to these other issues, and decide that we're, we're going to address this, and includes, uh, middle school. I am going to say about the middle school, um, what translates to me and the concern about the, the recess, and this, you know, optional and 30 minutes and 40 minutes being optimal, the kids who are going to have the biggest penalty on this, the kids who are least likely to get the most amount of recess are the kids who are on the longest bus rides. And those are the kids in the western end of the county. And so, um, the, the, the likelihood that you have a fungible schedule, um, changes the further afar you are from your neighborhood school. And the more distant you are from your school, the more distant your family is, the more displaced you are, the more stressed you are, the less involved your parents are, and, and, and. So this, this all ties together. Um, I, 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 um, I'm very grateful for what you've done. I do, I am very, very worried about the Generation Z report that just came out on the loneliness factor, that, you know, you have, uh, the greatest generation who are 72 and older have the, the least lonely factor. You have kids who are 18 to 22, who have the greatest loneliness factor. You have a socially, um, disconnected, broken set of young people who are, were raising to lead the, the country. Um, a- and all of this, except maybe potentially the hand washing, all of this is the ramp up to becoming an 18 to 22-year-old. Something that we're doing between kindergarten and 12th grade is resulting in, um, the highest suicide ideation, the highest suicide attempts, the, the highest degree of disconnectedness and loneliness. And, um, I'm beseeching us to take this seriously. It's something that, that, um, I, I've fore weighed into with my high school students for, for years. Um, and, and so it isn't anecdotal anymore. It's not scientific, but it's very, very far from anecdotal. And everything that you've done has contributed to this. Um, and I think we are being charged with our own charges to take your work seriously and get something done. Don't talk, do.
I appreciate that, and I, I want to, I want to add on, I couldn't have said that better. I think, I think you're my new best friend. Um, when people find out that I do this for fun, this committee, that, one of the first things they'd say is, help. This is, high school kids, parents of high school kids, parents of kids about to go to high school, it is a national epidemic. I'm from Grady, Alabama. There are 70 people there, there's no post office, nobody cares. If the school board in Grady sets a policy that affects homework or AP caps or any of these issues, doesn't matter. You guys are FCPS. It is a national epidemic, we need a national solution, and if not you, then who? This is, this is the board that can do it. So I will, I will echo what you said and what my friends, family, and neighbors are saying, please help.
I'm going, who's coming with me?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kies-Gamara.
Tell me where I'm going, I'll go with you. Um, shout out to, um, Madison High School. I, my, my kids went there, I had children there from 2008 to 2017. So, um, I know Ms. Heinz says she's your school board member, but anyway. Just kidding, just kidding. It's late, it's late, I'm sorry. No, but, um, really appreciate your comments and the hard work of this board. To me, this is just really, really valuable, um, input. I'm going to start where you ended, just because I flicked on my, um, computer, and you said you want to look at violence next year. And there's a, there's a, um, headline said that a child posed a question to, uh, the White House today about school shootings and how his friends are afraid. And I will tell you, Dr. Brabran, I went to a mental health, um, one, you know how you do those conferences every year, FCPS? It was a few years ago, maybe four or five years ago. And, um, there was no discussion about violence. And I was concerned about that, because that was at the time with Trayvon Martin and a number of other people. Now, of course, we've got other shootings to consider. But I think we are truly, truly fooling ourselves if we think that our children are unaware of these things and that they're not being impacted. So we need to have, and I thank you for, um, looking at these issues and bringing them to our attention. I don't think we can do it fast enough. Um, because the fact of the matter is, they're getting information in a much faster pace than we did, than I did, I'll speak for myself, growing up. I had time to process, but they, our kids are being bombarded, uh, with this information. And at a minimum, I would like for us to take some time, uh, to try to figure out how we can assist parents in helping our kids immediately. So that would be one of my next steps. I'll try not to go on and on, because Elizabeth said a lot of, uh, what I want to say and everybody else too. I wholeheartedly, um, support the, the recess, uh, recommendation, and I would love to, Dr. Brabran, look at how and if we can, uh, implement the whole parental notification. Um, part of the reason I think that that is important is because oftentimes, parents are at home trying to figure out what went wrong. And you only get a report when, perhaps, when something gets to a certain point, and it's really, really bad at that point. But the parent may not have been told that this kid has been disciplined by removing recess. And, um, I, so I, that's part of it, is how do we, how do we make sure, you know, possibly look at how we can do that? But also, I'm, if, if this is happening on a regular basis, I'm concerned about whether our staff, you know, who are doing this, understand the connection between play and mental health for children. And so, you know, to the extent that we can begin to educate our own, um, I think that we absolutely have to do that. Um, I'm also, I'm all for the greener, mother of three boys, nothing's clean, hands don't get washed, hands and, you know, sanitary, whatever, the hand cream, all for it. Um, with respect to AB, uh, APIB, um, have talked to a lot of kids, and this is absolutely true. I, I have not, you know, my, I heard it from my own kids, I hear it from kids I've represented, I hear it across the board. Kids, kids wherever I go are telling me the same story. And they're telling me that they're worried about their friends who are not sleeping because they're having to take so many classes, and they're saying they don't have time to sleep because they're trying to get into XYZ school. And so we have got to figure out a way to change the culture. And so I think, if I could write a next step, it would, you know, and hopefully I've said a few already, but I think that we need to start, you know, part of our communications with our parents has to be, how do we help our kids change this culture? Um, and so, I'd also like to, you know, try to make sure we're having those conversations. I think I'm being told by some of my colleagues that these discussions have happened before, um, and that parents want to be able to have, be able to choose these classes, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and I think that we can hear those things, but I think in the, in the end, we have to make some decisions as to what is healthy for our children, and I'm willing to do that. Um, let's see. Already talked about the impact of violence on student, student health. Um, I think I discussed everything, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. With us being almost an hour behind our schedule, we have a community members waiting to make a presentation. I'm going to be right on point. I'm going to be very, very brief, that, uh, I would like to request the superintendent to come up with a proposal for the board to have a more serious discussion on, on the cap on IB and AP issues. Whether, you know, they might include, you know, engaging, uh, college admission officers having roundtable discussion, community engagement, you know, boards just debating, you know, policy language, you know, if you want to do that. Uh, could also include, you know, have, you know, conversation with the teachers about, teachers and principals about homework issues. Uh, and also whether, whether, whether it is AP courses that are driving, courses themselves that are driving excessive amount of homework, or it's perceived need to help students get a higher test scores on AP tests that are driving the amount of homework for those AP courses. Uh, if, you know, a college or admission officers came out and say that we're not going to consider AP test scores at all, that might change the whole picture. So, so have that, have those conversations. So I would like to have, I'm not going to give you a timeline, but I want to, want you, you know, give us some thought, and have, give us a thoughtful proposal to how to tackle, how to approach this capping policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen.
Um, in light of the time, I just want to propose one factual correction on this, if it's still possible. So, um, for, for IB, you don't have, um, uh, courses and exams in, um, ninth and 10th grade. So it's only 11th and 12th, so that just needs to be fixed. Thanks.
Ms. Deana Kofax?
Seven.
You have to take six IB courses to get your IB diploma, starting at, um, 11th grade, six for the IB diploma.
Does that include TOK?
Yeah, I don't know.
All right, well, we, that, that's a topic for another time.
No, it's addition to that.
Yeah, it is, it's seven. So, um, thank you all, and all of you for your, um, hard work and, um, your passion on these topics. I, um, do agree with your recommendations. I, um, think we, you know, and, and the depth where, you know, students about cleaning the tables, I, I, I appreciate that, and I'm not sure how that topic came up, but I do remember, um, cringing when my kids had to do it. And, um, so the green chem- the, the green, the green products and vinegar and water, I think are great solutions. And we can use those in spray bottles rather than dirty, big buckets of water and paper towels would be better. So I, that seems like a little thing, but I, it's, it's not, it's kind of, you know. Um, I do, um, appreciate, um, also where you're going next year. I think that's impacting our students more and more than we know with every passing day, the, the violence that's happening and the stress that that's bringing forward. And, um, that's very, very difficult. The AP and IB thing, that is a topic that we have tackled when we first were on the board, and as some people said, it didn't go very far. I do think having that topic, as much as, um, I appreciate what you're thinking about Fairfax County being the leader and being, um, and, and I think we are, but I think if it doesn't include colleges, if it does- if it doesn't include admissions officers, if it doesn't include that, I think it's going to go the way it has been many, many times. Because, you know, I... My daughter just finished her freshman year, so I can offer my own anecdotal evidence. I know how very, very difficult that was. And I know what was required. And as Ms. McGlocklin said, it does correlate to GPA. You need a very high GPA. You need the rigor. You need all of those things to get in the most selective colleges, if that's important to your child, if that's important to the program of studies that they want. So I think, but there is a huge amount of stress and there is little sleep. And you're spot on in all of your comments about the way, you know, from 10th grade to 12th grade go, it's a stress factory. And Elizabeth, you were right. College, you know, lots of kids come back. I'm seeing a lot of kids. Again, it's anecdotal. It's my daughter and her friends. But like, college was so much easier than senior year. That's not something we haven't heard before. And what we can do to make that right, I'm willing to engage in a community conversation. But we do have to look at and figure out where the college admissions are. And we can't, and we don't want to put our children at a disadvantage in getting into those schools where they want to be to pursue their life streams. So it's a complicated affair. But I certainly think we need to engage in it. I think, I appreciate, again, all that you've said and done. And I think you've heard a resounding response from the board that it's something that we want to tackle, but it's a big, big issue. It's not one we haven't tried to walk down before. And I think we're willing to walk down it again. But it's very complicated.
Okay, thank you very, very much. This has been a good, robust discussion. And again, as I said at the beginning, your recommendations, one, two, and three, there will be, obviously, staff response. That's the way, and you've raised a lot of really very good things. We've heard about school board comment, I think aligning with a lot of the stuff that you've put up there. So and then Dr. Braybrand had indicated responses on, obviously, recess and not using it for punishment, the cleaning stuff. We will get responses back on that. Dr. Johnson has already sent us the information on AP. And I think that the board, we need to figure out how we're going to go forward with the discussion on stress and APIB, et cetera. I'm not sure we have an answer tonight, but clearly, I think that there is a lot of interest. Dr. Braybrand, if you want to...
I do want to say the last one on the stress. I've listened a lot tonight. One idea is capping courses. Another is looking at GPA. To be honest, in another division that I was with, we capped how... You could still take unlimited courses, but your GPA bump only extended after, to two or three. So yours was capping the course. Ours was capping, again, in the division I was in, was capping the GPA. So were you going after the GPA or were you going for the love of learning to take multiple? There's a lot of ways. I think we need to get college folks in. I think we need to have a greater conversation about how we can do it. What is real? What is real, listening to you tonight, to these folks in my own house, is the stress here is too much. We can be the premier school system. We can have outstanding portrait of graduate outcomes for kids. And we can do it in a healthy way where there's joy in every Fairfax County classroom and in every Fairfax County home. And we can do better. And we'll figure it out. This is not a place that I've found where if you don't put all the people together, working together, and there's going to be differences. It's okay not to have... I don't have a poker face. This group knows I'm horrible. But if there's honesty and there's a commitment to try to get to the greater good of kids, people can get stuff done. And I think we can figure out how we can get this done. I heard a lot of maybe perhaps different approaches, but the desired outcome, which is where we are with strategic plans, our strategic plan, even our prioritized strategic plan has the healthy choices for kids front and center. So we'll get it done. Leave hopeful, and we'll continue to work on some things. Hey, it's year one. You'll monitor, you'll come back. This is Fairfax. You're going to come back and say, "This thing was good." Hopefully, something was good. Something is, still needs to be a grow and do better. And we'll take that and get better.
I hope it didn't sound too negative at the start. We do appreciate the turnaround on recess. But yeah, let's keep it going.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you very much. So colleagues, we need to figure out how we're going to go forward with question number four. But I certainly hear, well, we don't ordinarily do next steps from, my staff was just telling me, but that there will be answers to one, two, and three and everything else that you have said.